It is in fact, motion seventeen, prevent reintroduction for six months. This motion shall be in order immediately following the defeat of a substantive motion and at no other time. The motion requires for adoption of vote equal to two-thirds of the actual membership of council, including the mayor unless he or she may vote in all cases, and vacant seats. And if adopted, the restriction imposed by the motion remains in effect for six months, or until the next organizational meeting, whichever occurs, so it would be in six months. So, it's a motion that has to be made immediately after the item is considered to be debated by council, ruled on, and then council can, or a council person can make a motion for it not to be reconsidered for six months.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I understand it, the item has to be discussed and voted on?
As I understand it, it's immediately following the defeat of a substantive motion, so it has to be debated and then council will vote it on.
There's no other further additions and deletions, and your motion to approve did you amend it then? So, Wyman has made a motion to approve, all in favor. The record stand, all were in favor. Mr. Daniels opposing?
And everybody here, I'm glad to see a packed house. Every time we get a packed house, you hear you guys every say that, but all too often many of us come to these meetings and sometimes we're the only ones here. So, it's good whenever we get citizens that want to come in and be involved, understand and get a history behind some of the decisions that get made, also get a history behind, you know, what the town's doing. So, I commend you all for coming out tonight. Mr. Crump, it's awesome to see you. I'm gonna be real quick, but I am gonna cover on the most important things that I think that you need to hear from me. I'll send you an email later on to council and to the mayor and town manager on some of our call stats and call volume. I'll just tell you guys, we're as busy as we were last year, if not a little bit busier, but things as far as our response times are holding well. The number of guys getting out, or number of times the guys getting out here, self-initiated activities, things like traffic stops, business checks, residential checks, things like that are all holding steady. So, I feel like we're holding our own this summer. It is hot, several of our pies the other weeks. We're trying out some new vests. Josh actually got one of them. They're a max dry cool vest, basically gives you some room between some of the body armor these ninety-plus days out here, kind of get a little bit heated. So, bear with us if you happen to ride by and see a couple of cars out here during the daytime more than what you normally would, because these guys are making them come in, get hydrated, take that vest and take that duty gear off for a little while. Some of you may have seen on the news this morning, outside of Indian Trail, but close enough for a stone's throw away, we had a death investigation going on off of, or Finch Road, my mind was going blank there for a minute, off of Finch Road, in the Prestwick neighborhood, just outside of town. Don't know if any of you have seen that or not, but we had a man deceased over there and another woman this morning, both of them victims of gunshot wounds. I feel real good about the investigation. At this point, to be able to tell you publicly that there is no fear of mine in the neighborhood, that there's somebody running loose targeting random people. So, I'll leave it at that until we can release further information out. Just wanna commend Public Works publicly in front of you guys. This past week, we needed them for a call for service here in town. Mike and Ryan, Mike sent Ryan over to help us out with the Botcat, and long Ryan filled us for about two hours, which helped us tremendously on the law enforcement related call. Fourth of July parade, we had a good time on, a lot of people out on, and just enjoyed the crowd that told Susan, I think it's one of the biggest crowds that we've had, Fourth of July parade, and we just appreciated the opportunity to get to work that. Deputy James May did all our planning this year for that, so we hand that out to our guys in the field and let them do the pre-planning for that, coordinate with the town and with the fire departments and things for those kind of coverages. And that's actually a requirement, a check off of theirs, as they move on in their career to have things that are better built, you know, for planning and stuff. One of the last couple of things this morning, several of our deputies were involved, you may have seen on the news, in a vehicle pursuit here in town that resulted in a crash on Waxaw Indian Trail Road. The highway patrol initiated that activity about one o'clock, I think it was this morning. Josh and several of the other guys that were involved in it, turns out it was two fourteen-year-old boys that were in the vehicle that they had taken from their parents' house. So, take your keys in your bedroom if you've got teenagers and go to sleep with them under your pillow. That'll keep your car from getting torn up. Last thing I wanna touch on is, right before the parade, I got a phone call and a barrage of emails. And I'll try to breathe before I say this, but there was a local newspaper ran an article out that touted the Indian Trail low taxes, no police department. And if anybody had time to read that, what they sold you was half of a story, if that, probably a quarter of the story. I've seen students write better, and more detailed and more thorough, accurate information, but anybody that knows me knows that my heart's invested in this town, along with these guys right here. And it really made me mad that morning when I started getting phone calls, 'cause I don't read that paper for a reason. But I think you guys know that these guys are committed to working for you. The low taxes, no police department, thirty-four thousand people in town, and you got a safe crime rate. You've got some things that are cited in there that are little websites that go around and pull different stats and numbers, and throw an award out to a town here, or throw an award out to a town there. But if you go on there and read what they do, they're just people sitting behind the desk. They've never visited a town to tell you whether it's the safest community or not. They're just throwing out some little numbers here or there. Indian Trail at this point will never make it on those little website award list because of the way that we do our crime reporting. If anybody wanted to call from that newspaper and ask us, we could explain that to them, but they tried to sell you a half or a quarter truth out here. What it did was, if I was a business owner, it would've made me very happy, because my phone blew off the hook from other municipalities saying, "Why come you got a low tax rate and crime rate so good?" So, I think, I wanna commend you guys, because what I took out of that article was, A, they didn't bother mentioning several of the fire departments that cover the town residents here. They mentioned one. And you got a slew of firemen that work here in town to protect your homes, your property, respond out whenever you have a medical emergency, respond out to motor vehicle crashes here in town. And they didn't mention all these deputies that are in this building that work Christmas, holidays, New Years, and everything else up here for you. So, if you didn't read the article, don't waste your time. And if you did, I apologize that you did.
Forty-three hundred and some change there. You said forty-three hundred, that was for...
Annual maintenance.
What does the annual maintenance give us?
For forty-three hundred, it's, they monitor it twenty-four seven. If we ever have any problems, we can come to them and say, "Can you fix this for us?" If there's a page that we can't figure out how to update or just change, we can say, "Here's what we would like, can you make this happen for us?" If we need a new page created, or a special event, or if we have a breaking news alert that we need to send out, if we can't figure out how to do it, we would just call them and they'd take care of that. The two main parts of that is twenty-four seven security, and keeping it, you know, safe from hackers and various things like that. And also, that is part of the requirement to get the free redesign at the end of three years. You have to have the annual maintenance for three consecutive years to be able to...
And the support, so the maintenance, I'm assuming gives us a level of support. Are we tier one, tier two, tier three? What kind of, where do we sit on that support? If we were to call them, what's their SLA to respond to our support request?
They'll have a special team that will just be assigned to us and a handful of other local websites, so they'll be available at any time to the response specifically to our needs and ever meet them soon. One of the reasons that that's important for us is we don't have an IT full-time staff member. I guess you could call us, call me our webmaster, and that is not really my specific area of interest, so it would be nice to have some people that's all they do for a living, even outside of the city.
And that also includes, I'm assuming, hosting is what they're gonna host.
Yes, forty-three hundred.
Can you do me a favor, 'cause obviously everyone knows cybersecurity is my business? If we could give you a little bit more detail on the security side of it, that would be helpful for me, so I can understand kind of what the security requirements are and how they're gonna be protected inside, 'cause municipalities is becoming a target, favorite target now. Definitely be interested in that.
Michael, let me get something more specific.
Yeah, please.
Yes, Michael. Obviously, if you look at Civic Plus and Vision Internet, you know, the dollars jump out, but let's say we raise the dollars. What's their value that I should take in by looking at the bulk of them? Quality of their worth of...
Well, yes, and I've talked to a number of municipalities about Civic Plus here in the area. I spoke with Davidson this morning, and they love everything that Civic Plus has been able to bring to them. They recently went through a redesign. The other thing that Civic Plus does, not looking at the dollar signs, is that mobile app that you've been talking about, a lot of people. That's probably the way that they would access our information to us, instead of going to the website and having to go through. You know, they would have their hop-on, they would immediately be able to go to. That's one of the things that really jumps out at me about Civic Plus. They both offer the same, the design options that we're looking for, a lot of the freedom, and really the ease for us to be able to update the website without having a full-time IT expert on staff.
Well, because like Councilman Savoza, that's a, you know, sixteen grand, are they gonna give us a free vacation or what? I mean, is there something that's there that I'm not seeing that you might've talked to them and...
Well, some of the development companies that we spoke with offered us, would be your basic website redesign. And really, what that would be is the site we have now that just looks better. We wouldn't be able to do anything new with it than what we have now. And that alone would be around ten thousand dollars for that redesign. So, all of the options are going to be in that range from ten for just our most basic, really archive websites, to this option, which will allow us to be able to be more proactive with it. Use it more as a communications tool than right now we can do with our websites. Use it to post a lot of the videos and photos that we've started to do, to really market Indian Trail for people that, if you look at our analytics right now, if anyone comes to the site, a lot of people come from this area, but we have a large number of people that come to our site from out of state. A lot of them are probably going to the planning pages, but we see a number from Indiana, from Illinois, from New York, that come to our website, and this is really the first that they're seeing of Indian Trail, is our website. And right now, what we're offering them really isn't a great picture. With a new website that would really be able to incorporate some of the new media stuff that we're doing, I think we'd be able to really send that message out to people that are considering bringing a business here, people that are considering moving their families here.
Mike, great presentation, thank you. So, in essence, what I take from this is, we have fifty thousand dollars budgeted, which the price of Civic is half that, and then if you even include in the maintenance, the maintenance that'll carry us out five years, right, to the fifty.
Yeah, so that was set aside a couple of years ago. We had to restart that process, but I believe the, what we're looking at now is a little bit cheaper than what we were looking at a few years ago.
Mike, I'm not gonna pretend to know a lot about websites, 'cause I don't, but I got a question. When do you need an answer on this? I know you wanna have it for the Newtown Hall, and I'm assuming the Newtown Hall is gonna be finished hopefully, maybe by the end of the year, or is that...
Movement's spring seventeen.
Spring seventeen. So, we still have time, I guess.
It's a sixteen to twenty-five week process?
Sixteen to twenty-five weeks.
A lot of that is going to depend on us, as we start building these pages, if we really go department by department and decide what do we want in each department's what pages. So, as soon as we make a decision, we could start working on it.
I would say twenty-five weeks before spring, you'd probably wanna give yourself that much time to have an answer by. And I just had another quick question on the maintenance part of it. What do we spend now on maintenance? Surely, we spend something on having the tally come in and work on it. What do we spend now, from an outside source, or you may not know that, but approximately?
I'm not exactly sure how often that we have to request help specifically for our website. That's separate than our emails or anything like that, that we request help for. I know a couple of months ago, we, the website was hacked, and we had to contact, I believe, the original host who had full circle to help with that. That was when we had an IT, a full-time person on staff. Since then, we've managed really any of it that fixes to the website ourselves.
Okay, thank you. Council, we either need to make a motion on one of those companies, table it for more information, or anyone care to step up?
Well, I'll make the suggestion, I don't know how you guys feel. I mean, I think it's fairly obvious, I mean, I'm gonna take Mike's word for the fact that Civic Plus is the, a much lower bid, and it's, you know, comparable, comparable to Vision Internet bid. So, I mean, if two services are close, and you have called and found out that they do a good job in other municipalities, you know, I don't know what would keep us from doing it, I don't know what council wants to do, but if I had to make a choice tonight, I would definitely go with Civic Plus. Huh? Okay, okay. Well, I'll make a motion to go with Civic Plus.
Okay, motion to go with Civic Plus bid, and move forward with the website design?
Just one more question. Councilman Wyman asked for some more information today, so are you still...
I'm still okay, yeah. Like, if you could still give me that security... But I, as far as pricing is concerned, you know, just kind of taking my country hat off, and just from an IT professional, I think the cost that Civic Plus has bid is within the ballpark, including the maintenance. I think the maintenance is probably a little bit high, but I think for what we're getting, for the cost is pretty good. Typically, when you see another company that comes in at a high bid like that, they really don't want the work. They're just responding to the bid. They're probably overwhelmed with work as it is, that's just kind of the game they play. So, I, you know, just from an IT perspective, I think that's a pretty good cost.
Council made the motion to move forward with Civic Plus? All favor. Unanimous. Thank you for the presentation. In the terms of consideration, council consideration, it includes having a moment of silence at the beginning of town council meetings. You put this on the agenda, I'll go before you, sir?
Yes, sir. I put this on the, on the, in new business items here tonight, because I think there was some confusion on last week in what I said and what other people said. First of all, I'd like to say, and I'll say it again, I am a Christian, and I'm proud to be a Christian, and I don't think anymore needs to be said. Last week, a secular prayer was put on the agenda, and I put it as a secular prayer, because I really didn't see a different, I didn't see that the people of the town would really want a different person that represented a different religion, you know, whether it was Jewish, which I'm half-Jewish, or whether it would be Buddhist, or whether it would be any other to come do a different prayer each week. And I said it could even be offensive to certain people to have to pray to, or not have to pray, but be asked to pray. So, I said, you know, I would prefer not to have a secular prayer, would not prefer to have a different person come in. I see on the tonight's agenda, we also have the secular prayer back on the agenda, but I also see now that we have a Christian prayer put on the agenda. And, you know, one of the things that was kind of, that kind of raised my eyebrows is, we had a moment of silence after the Orlando shootings, a couple of, a month or so, when that happened, and that seemed to serve the purpose very well, because no matter what you believe in, we all said a prayer in whatever we felt was good for the people of Orlando. And I lean more towards that right now. I like to see the fact, because now we have a, now we have a secular prayer on the agenda, and now we have a Christian prayer on the agenda. So, if you ended up approving them both, or whatever, then you would end up, you know, you may have a conflict on who wants to come in to pray, or whatever, when you come in to pray. So, I firmly believe in having a moment of silence, and you pray to whoever you wanna pray to when you come in here. I'll pray to, to my God, I'll pray to the Lord Jesus Christ, is who I'm gonna pray to. And you can pray to whoever you want to, if you have a different God, and I respect that. And part of that respect comes from having a, I had a Jewish dad, so I respected the fact that my dad was Jewish, and he was a good man. So, you can be a good man and good people and still believe in different religions. So, I'd just like to put on, or put it up, and I think Gary's got a, you got a question, Gary?
No, I just wanted to comment.
Okay, okay. I think I've said pretty much what I wanna say.
Mr. Savoia?
David, thank you, I think it was well said. You know, I'm a Roman Catholic, and, you know, and that's where I was raised, and I would agree, I think, and it's my opinion, I'm sure everybody has a different opinion here, but my opinion is that if you do a secular prayer and have someone from a different denomination coming into every meeting, you're gonna leave somebody out in the audience. And I think at least with a moment of silence, and just to reiterate what David said, is that each individual can pray to whoever they wanna pray, and if they don't wanna pray, then they don't have to pray. But at least it will include everyone in some fashion, so.
Mr. Daniels?
What's that, David? Just to clarify a few things, our county attorney wouldn't allow a Christian prayer, it's against our constitution. So, it was on there, not, it was on there to answer a question of a council member, but it can't be allowed. So, it would only be a secular prayer and a silent prayer. And the reason I'm wanting a secular prayer is not that it's gonna leave anyone out of Councilman Savo, because secular prayer doesn't identify any religion. So, if you don't sign up or don't make arrangements with the mayor, you're leaving yourself out at your own court. It's not that we're saying, "Eeny, meeny, you're out." Secular prayer says, you don't, you don't, you have to come up and sign up. General Assembly has a secular prayer, county commissioners have a secular prayer, United States Congress has a secular prayer. And I felt that, given the events in this world, this is not a ballgame where we, everyone stand up for a moment of silence. I felt that having a vocal prayer would show unity in the community, it would show emotion, and it would also teach our youth that we can pray together. And I think if you can pray together, you begin to iron out your differences, and you get to respect each other as people on this earth, and you forget about what religion they are. I mean, I was raised Catholic, all right? And I spoke to one of the maids on nearby town, I says, "How do you handle this?" He says, "One week we have a Baptist minister come in, the next week we have a Catholic priest, the next week we have a Jewish rabbi come in." He says, "Whatever, as long as it's respectful, and everyone has the opportunity to pray, they do it, and it's one of our largest cities here, and they all get along." So, I think the end result is that we have a moment of silence, but I think that we don't say, we don't say the Pledge of Allegiance in silence, and we use the word "God" in there, and it has never caused a problem. I went to school with so many different, I went to Catholic school, and it didn't cause a problem. I worked with different nationalities and races, it never caused a problem. But what it did do is that it brought unity to the, to the people who are saying the Pledge of Allegiance, and I think that a vocal prayer would do the same thing. Now, if council goes on to say that they want a silent prayer, I think having a prayer is the most important thing, and I would not be opposed to it.
Wyman?
So, this, this particular item and these items that have come up have really contemplated on these particular issues. You know, it's, it's always a challenge, right? 'Cause as government, you're always beat up and told that you, you can't do this, you have to have separation church and state, you have to abide by, you know, the constitution, the laws of the land, the laws of the state, and so on and so forth. And I truly believe in my heart of heart that the forefathers of this country, while they came over and their beliefs was Christian, I think they had the forethought to know that we as a nation are going to grow over the years, two-hundred-plus years. And they held true to the belief that we as a nation are going to grow and come together with a respect and understanding that there's people of all religions, of all faiths, that are going to meld within the society. And I think we've seen that over the years. And, you know, there's just been a lot of turmoil and a lot of confusion, a lot of misunderstanding around this particular issue and what it means from a society perspective. So, in contemplating this, I actually wrote something down that I wanna share with everyone. So, people of all faiths use some form of prayer or meditation in their spiritual and religious practice, albeit taking different forms and looking different from one another. A prayer can range from a silent meditation to a full chorus of chanting and harmonious recitation. In some religions, prayers perform sitting, others, they lie prostrate, kneel, stand, or even dance. Some prayer, some pray regularly, while others pray during special events or situations in their lives. In essence, prayer, in whatever form or position, is not just what we do, it is more importantly who we are. In the end, it does not matter whether we use "the," "thou," or "whatup" when it comes to prayer, in the form in which you as an individual pray. It is the attitude of our heart that counts. Therefore, to pray effectively, our body and mind must be peacefully in the present moment, in the here and now. When you have mindfulness in the present moment, you then have the element of concentration, which leads to insight. It is with this element of peace, in the present moment, with the right concentration, that leads to the insight that provides the right ingredients for prayer. This is why I support a moment of silence, to allow all of us to reach the right state that will generate powerful universal energy, allowing each of us to reach the right state for a successful prayer for our families, our community, our nation, and the world at large.
Mr. Collins?
Okay, if everybody's said their piece, I would like to have council consideration to approve having a moment of silence for the general, the town council meeting.
Make the motion to... Council made the motion to get a moment of silence. Let the record stand, it was unanimous vote. Gentlemen? Well done. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, boy. Thanks, everybody.
I would like to, after that being done, if this is the proper way to do it, and I hope it is...
I have a feeling I know what you're doing, but, Mr. Daniels?
Well, I was gonna make that, I mean, obviously, you know, that's a no-brainer, someone would say, that since we already have reached an agreement on our form of prayer, then yes, we should remove items eight to nine, because it doesn't, it doesn't apply anymore since we have a form of prayer.
Do we need to suspend the rules to do that?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, Mr. Collins made the motion to suspend the rules, all were favor. Unanimous, Mr. Daniels with the motion.
I'll make a motion to remove items from the new business items, item D, council consideration starting in chair of council meeting with a Christian prayer, and allow mayor to establish all the policies practices, and selection of those to give the prayer at each town council meeting. Motion is made to remove item H, and also, I'm gonna make a motion to remove item I, which is essentially the same wording, except we will take out Christian and add the word secular. So, we're gonna remove items H and I.
Daniels made the motion to remove items H and I. That's all we're favor. That would be that. Things as to item D, council to consider selecting and honoring an Indian Trail Person of the Month, get a certificate of appreciation, positive things that you can do for the town. Mayor, I'll go before you, sir.
Yes, sir. Actually, I think we all got a, an email from a resident this week, that suggested that we give a certain person in town a, some sort of award of recognition for his service, and that made me think about it. And I look at the people in this room, and I see a lot of people in this room that deserve awards that either have been past town council people for many years, or we had Mr. Ray Kella who spoke earlier today, who was the mayor, I believe, in the town council over the years, and a lot of people that worked very hard to make our town a better town. And I would like to see the council sit down and approve or have a Person of the Month, and give them an award of some kind. And it could be, it could be a person, it could be a, it could be a nonprofit, it could be something positive for the town, and a slap on the back, and a handshake, and say "Thank you for your hard work." And we can talk about this, but... And, and we can talk about this, but maybe it's a fifty-dollar gift certificate to a restaurant, or something that, that they would like to do. And I realize I'm spending taxpayer's money, but I think that's a great way for the taxpayers, for me and for us, to say "Thank you for, for," you know, a lot of people that work real hard and never ask, ask for anything in our town. So, anyway, that's my suggestion, and the council, we can talk about it. If you like the idea, I would hope we could, we could, we could do something and say, "Hey."
I would like if we could table this to a full council, because although on the surface it sounds great, and I don't have any, anything right now to say, you know, what could be weak about it, but I'm just thinking about, are you talking about businesses or businesses and individuals?
I'm talking mainly people. I'm talking about, like, a person, the Person of the Month.
Right, alright. I, I think that we gotta be very careful, because I don't want to, like you said, leave someone, leave someone out. So we're gonna make sure that we have some guidelines that will really shine on those people who deserve them. And, and I really would think that being a full council, having more thought, more input with this would help. So I would like to table it into a full council.
Okay, well, and we can discuss this more if we like, you know, or at another time, which is fine. You're always gonna leave somebody out, though. You've got thirty-seven thousand residents in town, you're gonna leave thirty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine of them. But if you, if you, you know, every, excuse me, I'm talking, every week. And if you're offended because somebody else is getting an award, then, then you're probably not ever gonna get an award yourself. You know, you shouldn't be offended, you should be grateful that someone else got it. And, and maybe it would motivate other people to work harder to give a fifty-dollar gift certificate to a restaurant. I know I like to eat, and, and so, but anyway, we, we can table it, I'm, I'm sure Ms. Nant would be, would be for it. I really don't see anybody on council that, that wouldn't be. But I see the, Mr. Merritt down there, I don't think he's gonna give me a high five, I think he's getting ready to tell me that something that he needs to say. Go ahead.
Well, I wanted to say one thing before Mr. Merritt. Councilman Collins, I agree with you, you're never gonna make everyone happy. However, I think by making sure that you, going over the guidelines, you're gonna, you're gonna include more people than leave out, and that's what I was pointing to.
Well, towns can do lots of things with their money and such, I'm not sure if there's actually authority to give a gift, even if it's a de minimis gift. So if you table it, I would look and see if there's any way to do that, but as I sit here, I'm not aware of any, any way to give a, you know, gift certificate or something as a use of hush and funds. So if it is tabled and given opportunity, I can take a look and see that.
And I think, is a flat, where a flat being the same?
You can give certificates, you can give awards, you can give that, but you generally don't see municipalities just giving, you know, a cash type award to anyone, and...
Well, can you give gift certificates?
Well, that's still... I guess, I guess if you had someone, I guess if you had a business, for instance, that wanted to sponsor it.
And I thought of that, and I wanted to do it.
I would say that, but as far as a direct expenditure by the town, I don't think there's authority to do that, but I'll look and see if there's a way.
Look and see, and, and we can give something, but I do, I do, and would like to see something that I think, generally.
That while Mr. Merritt's looking into it, council might table it, but yet direct the staff to look to see what other municipalities might do, and look at setting up a grading system, and possibly looking at some businesses that wouldn't mind sponsoring this.
Good idea.
And come back at the same time, which would alleviate the confusion, and most likely, Mr. Daniels, which will be a full council too. Mr. Savoy?
My comment goes in line with the mayor, I thought maybe having, working with staff maybe and drafting a policy, because eventually we would need a policy, right?
Yeah, it's a great idea.
And maybe thinking about, you know, how often a person can get it, you know, if one person gets it in a year, do they have to wait another year, another six months before they get it again, and things like that, right? So maybe just draft something.
Or they have to wait the three hundred, three seven thousand.
No, but, but I think we can dra, I think if we can draft something, and then come back and put a little thing in there to do that.
Okay, I agree, I agree, very good. Let's table it, and, and let's figure out what we can do to make this special for the town.
Collins, you wanna make a motion?
Yes, I'd love to. I'd like to basically make a motion to table this, and figure out how we can give a nice gift to the residents for their hard work. And we'll have Mr. Merritt look into it, and see what he can come up with, and hopefully we'll find something.
And also have staff look into this?
Have staff look into it, yeah.
Okay, all were table, tabling it? Development of a draft agenda committee to consist of the town manager, the mayor, and the town clerk. Larnell?
Thank you. So, there's been some misinformation and some facts that's really based in opinion, not actual facts, around this particular item. And in researching this item, it was kind of interesting, from statutory perspective, at least by the, stated by the council of government, that, that there's no requirement by state law that any municipality has an agenda, which is kind of a little odd. However, if they do have an agenda, there are statutory requirements that kick in at that point for specific items that have to be included on the agenda, and we see those items listed here today. And, and right now, the way the current system works, if, if I'm understanding it correctly, is that everything gets sent over to the town clerk, and the town clerk then makes the decision on whether the item gets put on the agenda or not. And it's important to note that all of these agendas are considered proposed or draft agendas until they're approved by council. I think I stated that the last council meeting. It's an important distinction, it's a, it's a very important distinction, because we as the governing body have the ultimate decision-making authority on what goes on this agenda, what's removed from this agenda, what's ultimately approved on this agenda. So what a lot of municipalities do, and I think Monroe, Matthews, Midhill, and other municipalities around here, is that they've given that authority, so to speak, from a post-agenda perspective, to the mayor of the municipality. And when we had the mayor, Matthews, in here that stood up in the back of the room and was waving his hand, he was a little confused. One of his points of confusion was, he didn't realize that the mayor of Indian Trail no longer had that ability to make sure that items were included on the agenda. At one point in time, Indian Trail actually appointed that authorization and authority to the mayor. However, because of behavior of a previous past mayor, that authority was removed and given to the town clerk and actually the town manager. So what, what I'm proposing here is, from a draft agenda perspective, is that we actually create a committee that looks at these agenda requests that are coming in, and they're the ones charged and responsible for including the agenda item. Essentially, what we're doing is we're giving that authority back to the mayor, and we're also including the town manager and the town clerk as part of that decision-making body from a perspective of creating this draft agendas. And one of the important works that they have as part of this draft agenda is, they're gonna review the policy and any other motions and decisions we made as council to make a determination whether that agenda item should be included on there or not. Now, there's been some misinformation out there that, that I'm trying to do this in the hopes of, of affording transparency and not being open. However, that's not the purpose of this. This is a body, they're a committee, they're going to actually include and keep notes and minutes on what's coming in, what's in the decisions, why those particular items have not been removed. And I did talk with the town clerk about this particular item, I also talked with the town manager, and they're, they're in full support. Of course, I talked to the mayor as well, they're in full support. So it, it's gonna give a nice view, both from an elected official perspective, as well as from, from staff perspective, on what should be included on the agenda, so that when we come here in council, we, we have an agenda that will hopefully serve the benefits of the residents as well as, as the town business. So one of the, I just wanna go over a couple of points here. So one of the things was, does that mean that there's no rules about what must be on the agenda or how it's created? The short answer is no. When a board uses what's, basically, ultimately, at the end of the day, the board still has the decision-making authority. So even the committee that brings the proposed agenda forward in, in front of council, we still have the ability to add and remove items. That, there's, that's misinformation that's out there, is that this committee is not ultimately setting what's gonna be on the agenda. They're not the ultimate decision-making authority, the governing body is. The governing body is us sitting up here. And so that's, that's important to note, that, that we ultimately have that authority to do that. So another question is, may the clerk, mayor, chair, or agenda committee refuse to allow a vigil board member's request to have an item included on the proposed agenda? Yes, they can. However, again, as I stated, we can override that. So for example, if I put in an agenda request, the committee says, "Well, Mr. Wireman, that doesn't meet whatever requirements that they're looking at," and they're not gonna include that on a proposed agenda, I can come forth here as a council member, and during additions and deletions, I can ask for that to be put on there. So again, we have the ultimate authority to do that. So from a, so what I'm proposing in the motion I'm gonna throw out here is that we actually create this draft agenda committee that will consist of the town manager, mayor, and clerk to prepare the proposed agenda on behalf of council, and then obviously the rest of procedures will go forth after that. And, and this committee will be responsible for setting the rules for submission of the agenda items, and all of the, the factors that go along with that, so. I got the motion out there.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes. I'd like to address this from the standpoint of, I've been accused in the past of putting on a lot of agenda items. If I may, tell you how an agenda item is born. Couple of weeks ago, a subdivision, Brandon Oaks, had put an email out to the mayor and to the town council about a pending building project that would go through their subdivision as well as another subdivision. I responded to that taxpayer's email, and I did research, and I said to them, "Well, you know, what, what we probably wanna do is get a moratorium, it's commonly known as moratorium." And I said, "How many people can you get to come and support this from Brandon Oaks and the town?" They said about thirty people. I did my research, took about two hours, found the statutes that supported this, and the item was removed from the agenda before the meeting. Now, the problem with that is, I think that having the way that we do, we allow the, the people's voices to be heard, and we make sure that we're having a committee, there may be some bias in there. On top of that, I think the person that presents the draft, they're going to do their homework and make sure that it's best for the people in the town. For example, how did town council person tell that person, "We know what to do, you don't need this moratorium." Well, that told me right away, they, they really didn't know what to do, because a moratorium essentially stops the clock, allows the town to look at their ordinance, and make, and make adjustments accordingly. If you allow the clock to continue, the developer has statues on their side, and they will, and they will use that.
Point of order, Mayor, please.
So to get me back to what I'm saying is that, you wanna make sure that the people don't have a limited access to their government, you wanna make sure that the, you're not going against the people's will, you wanna make sure that, say someone doesn't like you for whatever reason, it's, are they taking the agenda item because they don't like me, or what? And I think having a moratorium, someone raised their head, "Yes, they don't like me," so right there is bias, and that's, that's a sad thing.
Point of order, Mayor.
This is getting personal.
Well, I think, I think it's not being transparent, and I think it's taking the rights from the public. Now, but that won't stop me from, from, you know, putting agenda items up for the people, but I think it's, I think it's something that's to really direct it at me, and not, and not to help any, any situation here.
All right, Mr. Savoy had his hand up.
Right, of course.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Well, I wanna speak at least two or three minutes on completely something that we're not talking about, just like Mr. Daniels did just now. The, the whole reason for this is because we're here for the people. We're here to, for you, we're not here for us. You know, when a town council member puts an agenda item on the agenda, and then calls the media, calls every media service he can in town and says, "Come interview me, I'm putting this on the agenda." They're not doing it for the town, they're doing it for them. They're doing it so somebody's gonna come out here and look at me, look at me, I did this. And a lot of that is, and to be honest with you, that's what we're trying to do, we're, we're trying to keep it, and, and we're trying to keep it in the, with the town and for the people. You know, you know, talking about a building moratorium, this guy built eighteen hundred, approved eighteen hundred apartments right here when this whole room was full and the people were standing out here begging him not to do it, because he took developer money. Now he wants, now he wants a moratorium. Those are the reasons you, you put, you take things off there, because it's gotta be genuine, it's gotta be something that's good for the people, and not good for us. So if, if, if a committee looks at it and goes, you know, and, and here's what the committee is, and now I'm getting back to what we're actually talking about, what the, only thing that the committee is gonna do is go, "Hey, we're not gonna take it off because we don't like you, we're gonna take it off because you, it's already been on there before. We've looked at it, we've talked about it, you know, this agenda item has been on there before, we don't need to put it on there again." Anybody can still come in here and put it on the agenda, just like Mr. Wireman said, you can come in here and still put it on the agenda. It may not pass, but, for, for the same reasons, but it, it's here to save people time, it's here to save, it's here for the genuine people who really care about our town. And it's, and it's kinda to avoid, "I'm running for office, and here I'm gonna throw all these agenda items on there to make me look good, and, 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 and it's all for me." It should be for you, not for me.
Mr. Savoy?
So, so when I saw this, my first thought is, I was hoping that we could discuss this without developing a committee, maybe deciding if the reason for this is because of multiple agenda items that are thrown in, that we could maybe limit how many council put in. My thought was maybe that after a town, a town meeting, you know, you have up to that next week to submit your agenda items in, so that it's a week before the agenda comes out, where then the clerk and the town manager can discuss it and see if that, these, these items can be resolved, you know, before the agenda. And just as, we can add something to the agenda, we can do what we've done tonight and delete things from the agenda. So again, that, if we're adding and deleting, I, I don't see why we would have to take valuable, precious time away from the clerk and the town manager to stop this committee, when, again, as you mentioned, it's our agenda, just as we can add, we can delete.
Well said.
So that, that was my thought. But if, if we do go in the direction of, of establishing this committee, then what I would ask, in, in the vein of transparency, is that all the agenda requests be, whether you do minutes or whether you keep them, and, and put them in a folder, and put them out on the website, so people can see actually what was submitted. And then you never know, you could get some of the citizens that backed something that comes back. But again, I, I was hoping that we could set some, some policies without wasting, you know, the time of the clerk and, and the town manager, and, and do it without setting the committee. But if, if the wish is to go in, in the direction of the committee, I would just ask that minutes be taken, and that all the agenda requests that, that come on are placed out there on the website, so citizens can see what was asked of the council.
Mr. Merritt?
Couple items for your consideration when you're thinking about this. With respect, if you want to change the way the agenda's done, or actually the rules of procedure for the town, in Rule Four, it sets out how the agenda is basically set now. For better or worse, this was adopted as an ordinance by the town, which is something that, at some point in time, I'd actually like to unadopt it as an ordinance, because there are some problems in it being adopted as an ordinance. But given that it is an ordinance, if you're gonna change it, it has to be changed in the manner of the ordinance. So you'd have to, if, if you want to go down this path, that's the way you'd have to do it at this point, is to change Rule Four for the agenda process. And then our clerk asked a very good question to me a moment ago, which I hadn't thought about, which is, if you have this committee that you appoint, and there is a council member, the mayor, that is a part of this committee, is it considered a public body? And it would be considered a public body, because it's not just staff. Therefore, as a public body, it's gonna be of the meetings laws, minutes would have to be kept, it would be the same as if, you know, same requirements as if the council was meeting. So it would also be considered a public body, because it is not just staffed people who are involved in that committee.
Keith, I tend to disagree with that, based on what the information that I obtained from the school of government... from the School of Government, that there's three different ways according to, what's her name, Boostine?
I'm afraid of her.
Afraid of Boostine, Ms. Boostine, that agendas are, proposed agendas are created. It's either the city clerk, it's either the town manager, city manager, or it's a committee which is, consists of the town manager, the city clerk, and the mayor. It's not considered a public body, at least according to what she reported to me. It is an approved and acceptable way to create a proposed agenda that was going to be brought forward to the council. Now, it is up to council, the governing body from which she explained it to me, to set the policies and procedures in the way that that committee performs its duties and responsibilities as part of creating the proposed agenda. And I did talk with the city clerk, town clerk about this, that, you know, one of the things, because, you know, obviously, there's some misinformation about transparency out there, that, you know, there would be meeting minutes that would be taken and it would be included as part of that, but it's not, at least according to her, it's not, Ms. Boostine, it's not considered a public body.
I was only going by the David Lawrence School of Government book and his interpretation, but the statute also says, as used in this article, "Public body means any elected or appointed authority board, commission, committee, council, or other body of the state or one of the county cities not an option." That is composed of two or more members and exercises or is authorized to exercise a legislative, policymaking, quasi judicial, administrative, or advisory function. So, the committee is two or more members that is undertaking an advisory function. And under the, you know, the way this book is set up, it basically has scenarios. And under that question, again, there's also a specific part of it that says that if the committee is only staffed, then it's not a public body.
And from a legislative perspective, it's not required. And that's, I think, I think that's where the public body argument kind of falls apart, at least, you know, what she explained to me is that from a statutory perspective, the municipality is not required to have an agenda. If we do have an agenda, if we, as part of our rules of procedure, we do move forward and say we're going to have an agenda, there are legislative requirements of specific elements we include on the agenda, which is public comments and, you know, those type of things. But from a pure statutory perspective, it's not required for us to have one.
I agree you're not required to have one, but I think if you do have one, then it comes to do some other.
We're going back and forth.
But that's something, I'm just putting it out there as a.
Might I suggest, since maybe I don't have an opinion on this because it's only, is my name on there? But might I suggest, we push this to the next meeting because I don't feel comfortable being part of a committee that doesn't have policy weight to have agenda items approved for the draft, even for the draft agenda. I in no way, me or any staff member or other council member, want to give any perception of playing favorites with anyone. So, the policy of how we determine what goes on there, and I have no problem sitting with Scott and Kelly and even Keith in coming up with this policy of how it is, and having this meeting be open to the public. Why wouldn't it be open to the public? It involves the public. If you want to take the time to come and sit down in there, come on in. I have nothing to hide. I'm here to serve you. And to answer the question, many towns give the power to the mayor to create this agenda. In fact, when I was asked, I was the one that asked, "I don't want that power alone. I would feel more comfortable with the town manager and the clerk because they know what needs to be on there." Setting this policy so it sets for town business, what townspeople need for their infrastructure and related to their budgets, with what's going on in the town. And with the policy, it sets apart the rhetoric regardless of who is putting it on there. But I also would not remove anything without calling the council member that put it on there and letting them know why, if it passes, former councilman Waddell would say, "The smeltex." And, you know, with a lot of this misinformation just to cause trouble and keep causing trouble around there, no, it needs to be as transparent as possible. And if I'm involved, it's open to the public. So, I would be in support right now of tabling it. Let us get together, look at other towns' information, policies they have, what goes on in agenda, include Mr. Merritt if he so chooses, and come back in two weeks.
So, Mayor, if I heard you correctly, instead of specifically tabling the item, how about if I modify it to include a motion to where it directs the town staff to work with the mayor to come up with a policy and a guideline for how this draft agenda committee would work, and then we can bring it forward.
Bring that policy back to the council for approval.
And I would also like to hear in a future meeting, maybe the next one, Mr. Merritt's concerns and recommendations for implementation of the specific ordinance.
And I'm glad to get Rita Coleman to find out what her concern was about that and what distinction she sees that would not make it a public body. And, you know, quite frankly, in a lot of ways, I prefer it to be a public body because then you have to take minutes and it becomes a far more formal affair than I think you're intending or wanting.
Considering no rule, no motions are being made, nothing's being changed, it's just that I would think it could be set up not much different than like a public safety meeting, or it's open and it's a draft agenda in accordance to policy. So, I'm in favor of that.
Mr. Wireman's made that motion. All in favor?
Wait, what's the whole motion? There's been a lot of discussion. I just want to know what the exact motion is.
Yeah, so the motion is to direct staff to work with the mayor to come up with a policy that would set forth the guidelines and procedures that this draft committee would work under for creating the proposed agenda.
And then bring it back to council.
And then bring it back to council.
Edits and approvals.
Yes, exactly. Okay. Mr. Wireman's made the motion, but Mr. Daniels has a question for Mr. Merritt. Mr. Merritt, question for you?
Keith, I have a question. Should we be making a motion to adjust our ordinance? And in doing that, that would set the guidelines for what we're trying to do rather than to have staff and the mayor set the guidelines because if we adjust the ordinance, we're doing it as a council.
Well, that's actually what Scott and I were talking about. I was saying to him that when staff is working on this, whatever they come up with to do this has to be in the form of an ordinance that amends or an amendment to the ordinance that's already in place with our rules that the government ought to happen at this point. So, no matter who comes up with it in the formal format, it has to be an amendment to the.
So, the amended ordinance is going to come back to council to vote?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I like, that's a lot more constitutional.
Mr. Wireman's made the motion. All in favor?
Is the motion, is the motion?
You want to add the word?
Is the motion to amend the ordinance or?
No. You want to amend your motion? I'll amend the motion to say policy, from policy to ordinance. Okay.
Hi, Fred. May I be the clerk cap here?
Yeah, you got it.
Next meeting's in August. First meeting in August.
Let's shoot for first meeting in September. Do you have that?
Mr. Wireman amended his motion. All in favor? Pose. Would I keep standing? All in favor? Mr. Daniels posing.
And your staff. And I also would like to say, I rode around, I don't live too far from Crooked Creek Park, and I like to go there and I like to take people from out of town by there and let them see. And I was riding through there the other day, and I happened to see people eating at picnic tables and having parties and playing soft toss or cornhole. There was literally hundreds and hundreds of people in that park. And I sit and I look, and then I look at all the events that we have coming to the parks, and it just, it makes me proud, it really does, that we have a great park system, a great park director, great people that work for the park. But it makes me proud that it gives our residents a lot to do and to go out and have fun, and it's for free. It doesn't cost anything to go out and have a good time. And I just, I want to commend you for it. You know, I still hear naysayers all the time. They complain about parks, and basically, those are the people, I think, that aren't even going out and giving them a chance and going to the park. But Jason, you do a good job. Staff that works for the parks, you do a good job. And thank you very much because it just warms my heart to go out and see all the fun that people are having in the parks.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
For what you're doing.
I just want to echo what Mr. Cohen said. I attended both of those concerts. I sat next to him. But, you know, it's nice to actually see those types of events and with those types of venues that offer food, that offer beer, that offer wine. It's just a great, great activity. And you guys have done a phenomenal job. We're happy to say. Very well organized, very well structured, and, you know, as I said, definitely saw more and more people coming out. Definitely looking forward to the Michael Jackson, not Josh, concert, so definitely want to commend you on that job you've done. I do have one question.
Yes.
The building. Can you give us a quick update on the status of that? Because, again, social media is such a wonderful thing for misinformation. This is not, we're not getting funding.
Not that I know of.
Okay. And the delay was a result of matters that did not include.
Yeah, it just takes time to advocate.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to council comments. Mr. Merritt. Good Daniels.
Second, a little house cleaning. Earlier today, in a public comment, someone had mentioned that agenda items are put in on for political reasons. I'd like to just go over briefly some of the items that were not addressed tonight. And actually, one of the items was requested by a same individual who made the public comment. One of the items that was not considered was a council consideration on creating a new senior citizen, a new senior center for Indian Trail residents. And this was, this was requested by a young lady who criticized me for putting agenda items on for political reasons. So, I can't address that. True, she asked this about two years ago, and as I told one of the news people that we as a council spent fifteen months working on the town hall, which took a lot of our Another item that really, I was surprised it was taken off, is council discussion on creating a zoning amendment for a needy combination of a hotel, a minimum of ten thousand square feet, Class A conference center, and a white tablecloth restaurant in Sun Valley. In addition, what was also on that agenda item was to look at all safety features and traffic situations around that hotel that I was taking off. I'm not one to say that every agenda item that I've seen, I agree with, not even say that every agenda item that has come across my desk, but that was asked for by the people like you, like the moratorium. I mean, that was clearly sent to all the council members. So, for someone to say that I'm making these up for political reasons, I don't understand where they're coming from. When I'm, I'm taking something that you, the people, that asked me to put on an agenda item. So, I don't know where that's coming from. The other one that's really, I think that's really going to annoy us down the road was council consideration to direct town staff to send a letter to the North Carolina Department of Transportation requesting to have all the planned super street configurations in the town of Indian Trail to allow traffic to go directly through the intersection. This means that if you're at Unionville Road and you want to cross over, pass over seventy-four, and go past that, you can, instead of making that right turn, go a quarter of a mile down and make a left, and then, you won't have to do that. Now, I was told that staff sent a letter to NCDOT and it was denied. That may be true. I'm not denying that. But these agenda items are open for us to discuss. It's not set in stone. It's for us to discuss. And I will tell you, as far as the super streets, the town of Monroe was told the same thing. No deals, no what they're going to do. Was even put in the newspaper, they said, "No way." Well, all of a sudden, they had one of their streets turned into a Michigan left. And that's because you apply pressure as a group, as a community, and as a council, you'd be surprised that you can get done. But that was taken off of the agenda items. And my fear is, is it the messenger or is the message that's being labeled as we don't want to deal with it? It's not, it's not, as one person has said on our council, "It's not town business." But I think if you, the people, come to me, it is town business. And I'm afraid of, I'm going to continue putting agenda items through because, as it was pointed out, I can do it through additions and deletions, and I will do that. I can come and have my three minutes at council comments, I will do that. And when it's public comments time, I will take my time and also make sure that the voice is heard because I live in the southern part of Indian Trail, not the northern part. And I go to Harris Teeter, and people ask me every day, "What about this? What about that?" And that's where, and that's how agenda items are born. And I just want to make you aware, and anyone that's listening to Granicus and reading the minutes, that everything that you hear is not always accurate. And it pains me that people would say things that are not accurate. As far as the prayer issue, I never called a media for the prayer issue. I called the media because I said, "Listen, we have a situation, we're going to have two subdivisions, they're going to be affected by people driving through their divisions. And we just heard people here somewhere drive through traffic." And I said, "There's going to be an item on there that probably needs support, and you might want to cover it." When I came to this town council that night, I was told in a news media, "It was changed." I said, "What are you telling us?" He said, "You're talking about the moratorium." It was changed. I didn't request that, that item, a prayer to be on there. It was changed by someone else, not me. So, and I'm a person that I try to stick to the truth, and I always said, "If you want to know what's going on, you can ask me and I'll tell you. If you can stand the truth, I will tell you." So, it kind of hurts me because I really do care about Indian Trail, and I don't see that we're fighting enough as a council for our town. I think we're just giving our town away to NCDOT. They're supposed to serve the taxpayers. And when I hear an elected official tells me, "Well, we've sent them a letter, that's it." Well, we need to try harder. We just can't just sit back and say, "Well, they said no because Monroe didn't take it." How Monroe got their street done was they applied political pressure and they got it done. And we need to start doing the same because we are a municipality, the same as Monroe. We can't let anyone do a bidding for us. I'm just, I'm just sad when people say things and it's just not true. I mean, I would tell you, the large majority of my agenda items come from you, the people. So, if I'm making them up, how am I making up when I'm responding to the people? I just don't understand that kind of logic. And I'm not responsible for what someone writes in the paper. I'm not responsible for what someone says on the news. And I'm not responsible for what someone comes out of their mouth when they ask a question on the news. Okay? It's late, and we got, and since I'm first up, I imagine a lot of people are going to have something to say based on what I say. But as I always, and thanks for coming out to the meeting, get home safely.
I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Staff, as always, great presentation, thank you for all you do. It's the summer month, and we're going, our next meeting will be in August. So, I hope everybody had a great Fourth of July. I hope you're enjoying the summer and remember to be safe out there. Thank you.
Mark Warren? So, I want to address a couple of items. It would take just a few minutes. There was a comment that was made in our council comments in the last meeting where there was a council member who felt that my particular actions were personal in nature. And, you know, that's just, it's not personal by any stretch of the imagination. We do have different political views. We have different views on interpretations of what the residents ask us. And I was elected on a particular platform, and I do follow true and hold true as much as I can, as much as possible, to that particular platform. We're not going to always agree. That's why you have the five people up here. Because, you know, if we all agree, well, we saw the ramifications of what happens when everybody agrees. So, you know, you do have different views, you do have different points of views, and we're not all going to agree and support each other. You know, and I had, you know, I've been, you know, Ms. Stanton and Mr. Cohen and myself have been accused of being this pack that's running the town. But, you know, if you go back and look since December, they haven't always agreed with me and vice versa. I haven't always agreed with Mr. Daniels or Mrs. Savoy. There's been times I have agreed with them, and I've supported some of their items. And that's just the nature of the beast. It's the way government operates, just as people out in the public, on social media, you don't. You don't see people agreeing with everything that's posted out there. It's just human nature. That's the way we are as human beings, and that's the way we have to function as governments. So, you know, none of this is personal. I can shake hands with any one of these members up here and have a conversation with them. But when it comes to particular issues that are raised on the agenda, I have a due diligence and a responsibility to those that elected me based on the platform that I stood to either agree or disagree with those, and I state accordingly why I do or don't agree with those. So take the moratorium item, for example. I ran on a campaign that I don't, rubber stamp developers. And you can see since December 8th, I haven't done that. Show me, and I've challenged people who have claimed that Mr. Moser pays, gives me a paycheck and I have all these private meetings. I've challenged those people to say, prove it to me where that is happening. Prove it to me where Mr. Moser or any other developer writes me a check. And it goes silent, right? So people just throw stuff out there, but they can't back up their claims. I don't get a paycheck by any developer or anyone in the community, other than the residents of this town who write me a paycheck once a month to do this duty up here. That's the only paycheck I get from this town. And I get a paycheck from my employer because I'm responsible and have to do what they tell me to do. So we don't, and the hotel is a perfect example. Did we rubber stamp that? No. That still is not been brought up before council because there's still a lot of back and forth that's going on. We are performing our due diligence, and I'm performing my due diligence, as I quoted and stated during my campaign. I'm not going to just rubber stamp items. I'm going to hold people accountable and responsible. I'm going to ask the right questions. If the residents don't want it, they're not going to get it. Whether it agrees with Mr. Daniels, or agrees with Mr. Cohen, or agrees with Mr. Seboy or Ms. Stanton or not, if the residents don't want it, they're not going to get it. Bottom line. And I've heard from a lot of residents on a lot of different issues. So it's not personal. And as far as having to support someone who's either a fellow council member running for higher office or not, it was unfortunately, maybe it was a misquote in the paper, but it was quite clear in the paper that was quoted by Mr. Daniels that I'm supposed to support him because he's running for higher office. Now, I would ask Mr. Daniels, and maybe he wanted to contact the reporter and get a correction on that statement, because I'm not supporting, in my capacity as a council member, anyone who's running for office. Matter of fact, I can't. I can't go out and say, ask council member Mark Wyerman, I'm supporting so-and-so for public office because he's a good person, and I put my stamp on it as a council member. I can get trouble for that. And I don't do that. And I don't hold this office to help push my political aspirations for higher office. That's completely disrespectful to the residents of the town. It's disrespectful to the staff as well, because they have to unfortunately stay here late at night during these council meetings. So I want to get that very clear, that it's not personal, it's just politics. It's the way government runs. You don't have everybody with the same views, and you're not going to have everybody with the same views. And the moratorium is a perfect example. We already have weapons in our arsenal as council members that we don't need a moratorium for. And the hotel's a perfect example. We don't need to say, well, you as a developer, you have to stop doing that. There are other ramifications. And I talked with, I picked up the phone, or I'm sorry, I sent an email to Rox, who's a planning director. He has the pulse of the town from a development perspective on what the implications of a moratorium is. And he expressed his concerns for moratorium. And I value his advice and opinion because that's his job. And so I'm not going to support a moratorium because it can have a very serious trickle effect from an economic development perspective. And that is one of the things that I ran on, is I want to improve the economic development in this town. So I can use those other arsenals in my toolbox as council member that I don't need a moratorium for, right? So, and I've talked with Chris Platte. Moratorium has a very negative effect from an, impact from an economic development perspective that extend beyond the period of a moratorium. Chris Platte has 17, over 17 years of experience in economic development. I think he would know what that impact would be, and I value that opinion. I don't have all the answers up here as council. I rely on advisors and staff and other experts to help me do my job up here and do it as effective as possible to use the residents. So I just want to make sure that that is clear, clearly articulated, that, you know, I'm here for you, I will always be here for you. And, you know, we're not always going to agree. So one of the things, actually, we can agree that we're going to disagree. That's probably the only thing we're going to agree on, but I just want to state that. So it's going to be another several weeks before the next council meeting. And, you know, as Gary said, we're in the summer months, just, you know, it's very hot out there. Please be very safe, drink lots of water. And I hope to see a lot of you out at the next concert series and enjoying the concert out there. And staff, I want to thank you again for continuing to do a phenomenal job. I continue to get feedback from the residents that, you know, you're doing a great job for all the different areas that you're responsible for. You know, I definitely appreciate that. So thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, for sticking around. And have a safe summer month. Thank you.
Okay. I'll try to be as quick as I can here. I just wanted to make some comments. Sometimes I hear things and I can't believe what I hear them. Why would we shoot down the 10,000 square foot conference center and white tablecloth restaurant along with a hotel on that side? Now, I believe you're just, if you don't bring a 10,000 square foot conference center and a hotel, then you couldn't put a hotel there. You couldn't put anything there. So you're kind of limited to what you're, and to be honest and frank with you, I think it's a stupid idea. And that's why I didn't, wanted to take it off. I think the developers would think it's a stupid idea. And you know I don't support the developers, but how in the world could you support something? You know, I heard Mr. Daniels, when we were building that, he worked 15 months, he says, on building the town hall, which people didn't get a chance to vote on. He said that he wanted to build a, he wanted to build it big enough to have a high school graduation in there. I think a lot of you remember when he said that. They would have had to build that thing four times the size it is now. Instead of being $8 million, it'd be $40 million. He also said he wanted to put a cafeteria in it. He also said he wanted to put a Starbucks in it. So a lot of these things just don't make sense, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to support them. When he says not everything you hear is accurate, that's true. Mr. Daniels said he didn't support a town hall when he ran. When he got elected, he did support one. So you're right, not everything you do here is accurate. He said he didn't call the news media. I called both news media outlets last week, and both news media people said that were here, said he had called them and asked them to come out. Now, I've been here five years and I've never put anything on the agenda and then asked the news media to come out and interview me. I do it, and I've said that earlier, I don't do that because it's, I do it for the people and not for me. It's not about me. As a matter of fact, I don't even like talking to the news media. So try to stick to the truth, he says. I just wanted to say, my, Mr. Wyerman said he didn't, he doesn't, he's never taken any money, or he might add that he's never taken money where he gets paid, but you also have never taken money from a developer. And I've never taken money from a developer. Mr. Daniels has taken money from a developer. I just, excuse me, he's taken it from a developer's employees. So I wanted to just kind of touch on that, on what he said tonight. And like I said, I can't, I can't believe sometimes what I'm hearing. But I also want to say, I read this article in the paper, and I found it, you know, just, you know, kind of crazy. It says, he wants to know why I don't like him and why the council people don't like him, and why we won't vote for him. Because we're on the same council as he is. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't you vote for me? And, you know, last week, he, or two weeks ago, he mentioned that Mayor Koch said if it was a Democrat or a Republican, as long as it was a good idea, it didn't matter. And I agree with that. I agree with that 100%. But then in the newspaper, he brings up the fact that we're Republicans and he's a Democrat. I kind of find that very hypocritical, is what I find that. But, you know, what he said in the paper is why, why does that, why do we automatically mean they are opposed to me? I'm still a fellow member of the same council they're on. Why, why they want me to lose so badly? I don't want him to lose so badly. I want the town to win. I want the people of this town to win. And just some things right here, for instance, the sheriff's office. And listen, I could go on and on and on, and I don't think I have all night, but I'm going to, I'm going to go on because these things, these things, well, you know what, I probably could go on to tomorrow. If I so would put everybody through this, but I just want to tell you, these are factual things. And the people in this room know they're facts. First of all, as far as the sheriff's office, last week you said, you're a numbers man. He was trying to get them a better contract when he was out here talking to everybody about starting a new municipalities, to start a police department. He wanted to get a better contract for the town. Well, we didn't have a contract up. It was going to be three more years before. And it is odd that he took and got the baton passed to him from Darlene Luther and Robert Allen, who passed the baton. Do you know what it means to pass the baton? Pass the baton means to share their ideas. He's going to take their ideas and pass it on down. You know what they tried to do, don't you? They tried to start a police department. We all knew that. We all knew that. It is funny. It's real funny. So, so let me tell you, the sheriff's department doesn't buy what you're selling. They don't buy it. Nobody buys it. We, I mean, you know, you go by your actions. You said you were working 15 months on a town hall. My question to you, would that be before or after you told the residents you were not in favor of a town hall? You know, 15 months ago? No, 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 this is my time, buddy. Okay? Was that before, before or after you told residents that North Carolina prohibited the town hall to be put on a referendum, which you said? And that's just not the truth. So, okay, as far as prayer goes, you know, it's almost five, you know, I've been on this almost five years. I have never heard a person come up until the last week ever come up and say, we needed prayer in here. I'm not saying we don't need prayer, but I've just, it's never been an issue. It's never been an issue with the town. So, and I've never had an email in five years that said, we need prayer. So yes, I think he's grandstanding. I think he's running for an office, and yes, I think he wants people to vote for him. And those are, that's just my opinion. Five years of worth of not hearing something and then to come up with something, and then call the news media and say, hey, come out and interview me. This is what it's all about. Again, I don't like that. Moving on. I listened to him ramble last week about monies for athletic associations. You know, people, I'm telling you, these are all true things. First of all, he tried to give two athletic associations $15,000 apiece. We turned that down. And I'd love to give these athletic associations $15,000 apiece. But one of the things that struck a nerve with me, I've been on athletic associations for a year, what was, he said it wasn't for them, but it was for the children. And he wanted them to stay off the street in the summer. He, you know, they were out of school, he wanted them to stay off. You know what? Athletic associations don't have programs in the summer. So you would be giving them to an athletic association. Basically, how they work is, is when school's out, they pretty much will shut down their association. They start everything up again because there's nobody here to play the sports. So do your homework before you say something. Do your homework. He said, he also said he's never a rubber stamp guy, but you rubber stamped every time, everything, including the 1,800 apartments. And who really thinks we need 1,800 apartments here? From the developer that paid you the money, or the employees that paid you the money, you rubber stamped that and you've rubber stamped every developer project that's ever come down in the two and a half years that you've ever been here. So I think, I call that a rubber stamp guy. I don't know how else you'd say it. Campaign promises. You said, you said, one council person said they campaigned to stop multifamily homes and that just to, to stop everything. Well, we stopped everything because we felt like it's our vote, just like Mr. Wyerman explained earlier. It's our vote. You know, we promised the people that we wouldn't build things, but we're not going to promise that we're going to just stop everything because that's not good for our town. I got to agree with, and here again, you have a guy that's rubber stamped everything there's ever been, and then come up and want to build a moratorium. That's, to me, is very hypocritical. It's hypocritical. Do as you say and not as you do. Okay? And that just don't work in my book. I'm sorry, but I can only listen to so much. I've been up here, I listen to it and listen to it and listen to it, and it just goes on and on. You know, as far as the newspaper articles, Daniels, let's say that part of the reason that I'm doing this, and he actually said this, putting items on the agenda is to help me win the election for higher office. And then again, why are they opposed to me? Well, it's not that I want you to, you know, it's I believe our town deserves something better. It's not that I don't like you, Gordon. I just believe our town deserves better. I believe our town needs somebody that's going to tell them the truth in what they're doing. And they're not for themselves, they're for the town. That's what I believe. Okay? The reasons why I think our town deserves better? When I, when I see you take the baton from the council members, when you try to start a police department, then you say you're going to set up meetings with other municipalities, discuss a police department, then say you were doing the things to get the town a better contract when we weren't even up for a contract. You know, all these things bother me. Seeing you vote for the 1,800 apartments, voting for the developers' projects that you've taken thousands from their employees, then saying you didn't take money from a developer. Those things really aggravate me. Those are the reasons I don't vote for you. Those are the reasons I won't support you. Doesn't have anything to do with whether or not I like you personally. You know, I paid attention when you told the people of this town that you didn't need to listen to them every time it was time to change a light bulb. I think that was your most famous statement of all time. I've heard more people hold that, even if it's an eight and a half million dollar light bulb, okay? I heard you say that the people elected you to make decisions for them. I kind of think that I, that we're up here to listen to you to make decisions, not to make decisions for you. I've heard you call yourself a visionary. I've heard you, you said you have a great mind. Let me just say, I disagree. Okay? I just disagree. I heard you say you wanted to build the town hall, I've already said that. I saw you play up to the sheriff's office a few weeks ago and say you wanted a satellite office without talking or discussing it to the sheriff's office. You know, believe me, they know a hypocrite when they see one. They do. I've seen you not, not come to council meetings. You know, something that we all forgot, when, you know, he refused to come to council meetings for several months. Why? Because he didn't get his way on the vote. He didn't show up. So we couldn't hold council meetings because we couldn't have a quorum because he didn't get his way. He didn't get his way. And, and, you know, that's why I don't vote for you, Gordon. Those are the reasons I don't, that I'm not voting for you. I've seen you come to meetings and, to council meetings because a vote didn't go your way. I just said that. But I'm also going to close by saying that I don't know you personally, Gordon, I really don't. I've never gone to dinner with you. I've never played golf with you, never watched a game with you. But I have paid attention to who you are and what you say. I believe your intentions are to better yourself, not the town or the people we serve. Okay? So to answer your question, it's not that I want you to lose, it's I want our town to win. And I think they deserve much better. People want you to know what's wrong with our, or I want you to know what's wrong with our country, is there's too many people that say and do these things, and then nobody does anything about it. So, you know, I hate to do this, I hate to come up, but, but you know, I can only hear so much of it. And I do believe that the man is running for an office and he's, and he's putting agenda items up, and he's doing these things. It's my prerogative. It's his prerogative to say those things, but I give you proof. Everything I said right there is 100% true. And everybody that's been in this room over any length of time knows I'm telling you the truth. You know what's the truth. And it's kind of hard to believe. It kind of is hard to believe. So, you know, which side of the mountain are we talking on tonight? You know, I've supported many, another thing about the Democrat and Republicans, I've supported many Democrats in my life because they're honest people. Okay? That I believe, that I have believed in at the time. But with your voting record of saying one thing and doing another, you're grandstanding for votes to do what is good for yourself and not the people of your town, I could never support you personally, Gordon. I just wanna say, I hope everybody has a great time until we meet again, and I'm sure we're gonna hear lots of things. And I wanna say, God bless our town, and God bless America.
My club rest. Wow. (laughter)
I've heard this story a few times already, so.
You're probably here.
Guys, I sat very patiently. That was my time for 45 minutes. You know, God has a sense of humor. Tonight, what was on the agenda? I opened up the mail, and I saw an advertisement for digital speed signs. So, how ironic that was for tonight's meeting, but I'll try to be real quick here. Last night, I received a message via social media from a resident in regards to the construction and people using their neighborhood as a turnaround when it's a dead end, and requested more police, or more sheriff presence and a sign. I reached out to Captain Koble immediately. Captain Koble, before I could ask for a sign, sent more patrols over to the street, reached out to Scott, and before the afternoon, apparently, that "No Outlet" sign was put there. The residents were very grateful, so I appreciate Captain Koble for that quick response. As far as the zip line goes, I've watched it, and I've watched 50 children in line, standing there patiently, without pushing each other, without shoving each other, just waiting to turn from sometimes 10, 15 minutes to take a 30-second ride. Maybe we need to take lessons from the children, because doesn't it say, "A child shall lead them"? They really raise the bar when working together. Having the government dictate what goes where in a commercial setting kinda scares me. Let capitalism work, and let them come to the town and request what they wanna build there, and let the people speak on each individual project. If the project serves merit, and if the council or governing body is in the people's corner, then what's best will be done, without forcing stoppages and telling what people are doing. And I need to correct myself. It wasn't a letter that was sent to DOT about the Michigan Laps and Super Street. They came and did several presentations for town input, for council input. This lasted months, and there was even an argument that Publix, or the grocery store to be named later, would not be coming if we didn't change an intersection. And we fought with DOT, and we won. This has been beaten with a dead horse. It has been open for public opinion and public votes. I don't know who's been sleeping through it. It went on for years. And we had our say. We had our input, they made some changes, residents asked for changes, some were made, some weren't. You win some, you lose some. The road's moving forward, and again, the presentation was done. I'd like to thank the council for coming together on a moment of silence. Myself, as a Christian, I would love to have a Christian prayer wherever we go. But unfortunately, we're a government, and I think they made the right choice in going with a moment of silence or a moment of reflection, where you can pray, you can do whatever you wish. I believe even President Reagan had that for time until Congress dropped him down on that and removed it from the schools. I myself would choose to pray. I pray every day. It's not just going through the motions. It's from the heart, and something to just go through the motions for a political agenda soils the true faith. And that can go. And I remember, yeah, it was, David, about four and a half, about a little, about four years ago, I had spoken to some council members, that, three of which are no longer here, and had never gone any further about putting prayer on the agenda, and they absolutely positively said no, and I never took it any further. They moved it, and we're gonna put it back on there. And one was a self-proclaimed atheist and was insulted by my request. It never got to me talking to you about it, David, and I apologize. I appreciate you, Gordon. I don't have to agree with you to appreciate you. And like I said to you before, I'd be honored anytime to sit down and pray with you as a person outside these doors. And here, we have a job to do when we leave these doors, that we leave it here and rise above it to be neighbors and brothers, and set that higher standard amongst our country, which is headed down the wrong path now, where our law enforcement, regardless of whether they're transit authority, or even just a school resource, or a security guard, they're under attack. And I don't have the answer, except other. We stand together, we stand united, we pray together, and we stand with our law enforcement and our uniformed personnel, and we continue to praise them and give them the strength to put on that uniform every day, and pray for their families that they don't get that knock at the door later in the evening. We're blessed to have the sheriff we have. He had a prayer at the flag the other day, and he had said that we're pretty blessed here in Union County for the law enforcement we have and the residents alike. I had spoken to one deputy just on the street and thanked him, and his response was, "No, I wanna thank the residents of Union County, because I know if something were to happen, I have no doubt that any one of these residents would come to my aid." So congratulations, Union County and Indian Trail.